Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Longdale City Council to order. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to give the roll call, please. Madam City Clerk.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Hoffman-Gorman?
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Here.
Councilmember Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Kearney?
Here.
Mayor Pauline Miles?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. A flex salute today will be conducted by Councilmember Pat Kearney. And a word of inspiration today would be conducted by Pastor Jim Oriani from Cavalry Chapel, South Bay. Let's have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand, place your right hand on your heart, and repeat along with me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Please remain standing.
I want to thank you for allowing me to be here tonight once again. Our heavenly gracious Father, we come before you this day asking for your blessing and help as we gather together for this council meeting. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and excitement for the good of the people and the good of the city of Longdale. Give us this day the wisdom from above that James 3:17 says, "But the wisdom that is from above is first pure, then peaceful, gentle, willing to yield, full of mercy and good fruit, without partiality and hypocrisy." Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work, help us to work together, and encourage each other to excellence. We ask that we would challenge each other to reach higher and farther, to be the best that we can be. Galatians 6:9 says, "And let us not grow weary while doing good; for in due season we shall reap if we do not lose heart." We are a team and want to move forward together. Finally, we do want to pause and say thank you for how you've guided us through, taken care of us in the past, and we know that you will continue to do the same as we move forward. Thank you for being the same yesterday, today, and forever. Again, thank you for the privilege of allowing us to be here tonight, and we pray this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you once again.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for April 5th through April 18th. On April 5th at approximately 11:45 a.m., deputies Lupins, Gonzalez, Poole, and Bauer, along with detectives Vigro and Short responded to the 16,500 block of Hawthorne Boulevard for a burglary to a business in progress call. Upon deputies' arrival at the location, a male and a female were detained. Video obtained from the location showed both suspects stealing items from the location. The stolen items were recovered by the deputies, and both suspects were arrested for burglary and possession of controlled substance. On April 8th at approximately 7:00 p.m., Deputy Rivas was conducting a patrol check of the alley south of 160 Second Street, east of Hawthorne Boulevard. Deputy Rivas detained a male and a female who were loitering in the alley behind a closed business. While speaking with both individuals, he determined the female was in possession of methamphetamine. She was arrested for possession of a controlled substance. Last, on April 10th at about 1:00 a.m., Deputy Sefuentes was conducting a patrol check of the alley located at Artisia Boulevard and Firmona Avenue. He located a male standing in the alley and contacted him. While speaking with him, he discovered he had methamphetamine in his pocket. The suspect was arrested for possession of controlled substance. What these arrests show that whether it's day or night or early in the morning, your Longdale deputies are always out there positively looking for crimes or possible crimes in progress, and they're doing an excellent job staying active no matter what time of day. In regards to crime, the city's crime rate continues to trend downward with an overall crime decrease of 8% compared to last year. This includes a decrease of 38% in robberies, a decrease of 9% in assaults, and a decrease of 25% in larceny thefts. There has been a slight increase in burglaries compared to last year that we will be examining. Last, I want to thank everybody that came out last month to the city-sponsored Coffee with a Cop. It was a great event and fun to meet so many community members. I want to give a special thanks to Starbucks for hosting the event. This concludes my report, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the captain? Captain's report. Okay. Captain's report. Thank you, sir. Next item on our agenda is oral communications. This is where you have the opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to do so, we ask that you line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, you come to the podium if you would start with your name. At about two minutes, two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on to give you a signal to start wrapping things up, and the city clerk will give you the signal. Let's have our first speaker. And we note that the city clerk has changed her seat. Thank you, madam.
Gary Adams. I've sent an email to all the council persons, the city manager, and various directors in the city, which I would like to address, and I have two other items. I want to read this into record to make sure that those that are watching by closed-circuit TV will be aware of this. This is titled, "RJ's Illegal Business Expansion." As my understanding, four members of RJ's met code enforcement and community development last week. Further, that RJ's indicated intends to submit a new site plan to address various code violations. Please be advised that RJ's was previously told by our now-city manager that a new site plan allowing for expansion will not be approved as it is impossible to meet code requirements due to limited site area. Please note, the meeting was scheduled over a month after receiving notice that it is subject to revocation of its business license. This notice was issued after years of ongoing violations. For some reason, I've lost part of my message here. What I'm missing here, as I'll have to do it from memory, my concern is, and Mr. Moore can probably support this, that RJ's consistently through the years have made statements, commitments, to do things that have not been done. They are not a good neighbor from my perspective, and they do not keep their word from my perspective. The point that I'm getting to this meeting last week, they claim they want to do a new site plan. Well, that's not gonna fix anything. It will not fix the major violations. There have been literally tons of additional materials that have been illegally stored on their commercial lot facing Manhattan Beach Boulevard. There's been at least four gigantic two-story racks that have been installed illegally as well. There is illegal material stored on the R3 lot facing Manziel. There has consistently, on every business day, been illegal parking on the R2 lot facing Revilla. But back to my biggest concern, it looks to me like this is a major delay tactic, which appears to be their typical way of doing business, and I would request that the city instruct whoever needs to take the appropriate action. If these violations are not cleared by the date that was referenced in the notice that was given to them, then they either need to have their business license revoked and are suspended until all of the code violations are corrected. That's my main thrust. Now, two positive things. The Sheriff's Department, last week, for the first time in 41 years, by my observation, issued a citation for the illegal semi-tractor trailer traffic on Manziel Avenue. So, I already thanked the officer for this, and I want to thank them publicly. Also, last week, the California Highway Patrol was involved with cleaning out or clearing out the illegal homeless encampments on the 405 freeway right-of-way north of Manhattan Beach Boulevard, and I would like to publicly thank them for that as well. And in my letter, which I've lost part of, if any of our esteemed members here have any questions, my phone number is public record, or has been, and I'm perfectly willing and able to discuss the issues. Part of what I didn't have, somehow I lost it here, I personally offered to help RJ's to do what I believe will take care of at least all of the problems, which is to remove the concrete center building, which is basically against the sidewalk on Manhattan Beach Boulevard. This would allow for semi-tractor trailer traffic to pull off of Manhattan Beach Boulevard, unload in their yard, and pull back on the Manhattan Beach Boulevard. This would be a very efficient operation. But for whatever reason, they've pretty much stuck their head in the sand, I've heard things like, "Oh, well, we need time." Well, how many years do you think you need to fix this stuff? It's been years. And then I heard another comment, "Oh, well, it's expensive." Well, yeah, you do a business expansion, it's normal that you're gonna incur expense. So, they think they get free rein, and they can do anything they want to. At least, that's been my observation. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, we have a problem with the system. It's showing me three minutes and then 30-second warning, but the timer's actually five minutes.
Okay.
So, I'm gonna have to let you know.
Five minutes?
No. The countdown has been five minutes, so everyone else shows three minutes as it's supposed to be, so I'm just gonna let you know visually.
I'm starting my clock here, so I did not run overtime, okay?
There you go. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Good try, though.
Yes, sir. To the mayor, the Hon. Mayor, and the distinguished councilman, the lawyer, all the guests, and everyone, how are you? We've been doing business with Longdale now for six years, and we like to model the city of Longdale in partnership with the community we serve, and that's indicative of how great you are. And I don't know if it would be apropos to say congratulations to the mayor. Did you come to Congress, person?
Halfway, still in progress, but that's for another meeting.
I know. I didn't want to allude that, but I did vote for you, and I've been following that, okay? And so, you're the best man for the job. Okay. You and I spoke.
Go ahead.
You and I spoke, and I'm here to find out what's going on with the proposal, the vision plan that I dropped off. We're concerned about the recidivism. Okay, I represent Eubanks Conservatory of Music and Arts, Inc., Culture Arts. We know if you take culture out of any society, you have pandemonium, and that's what we have. Okay, and we're here to partnership with you guys. We know that you have an outstanding television media in back, and it's not being utilized. And we gave you a vision plan of how we wanted to come in and utilize it and curtail some of the recidivism that's going on right now. And it's been over two months, and I just happened to stop by, I was driving by, just happened to stand, I said, "Let me just drop in." It wasn't planned. As I said, I spoke to the mayor, he called me, I've sent emails, and we're trying to find out, has it fallen on deaf ears? What is going on? Louis Lee with Eubanks Conservatory of Music and Arts, Inc. This pandemic has been very, very, very gracious to us. We did get $5,000 from the city of Longdale. I believe it was an incentive program out of all the businesses, and 50 were chosen, and we're honored. We want to put the money back into the community. We're a nonprofit 501(c)(3), and just so happened with what I do for a living, working with Lionsgate as a musician, adjunct professor at USC, and the money that I have coming in, I want to put it back into the community. Okay, and we see what's going on with the recidivism, the kids, the youth. There's nothing addressing this, Culture Arts, and what they're doing, dancing, acting, and you have outstanding television media back there, and it's not doing anything. And we want to come in and utilize it in partnership with you guys. That's all we want to do, and put the money back into the community. You see, if you just give us a chance. Now, I don't know if we have time. I'm about to run out before the light comes on, so I'll truncate this now. Do I take any questions, or do I just leave?
No, well, when everyone has a chance to speak, then... No, don't just leave. Then the council will entertain questions if they have any questions or replies after everyone has a chance to participate.
Yes, sir, yeah. So, should I wait?
Yeah, you can wait around.
Okay, thank you for your time, your patience, I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Yes, sir.
My name is Arne Carrillo. I'm a branch manager at RJ's Construction Supply. I just want to let you guys know that we're here to make things right. I'm representing them, I'm the manager there, like I said. We want to be a great neighbor, and, you know, as long as there's a constant line of communication, we'll make sure that things are done right. That's all I really want to say for right now, but we are dealing with challenges, and we're working on it on a daily basis.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Good.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Happy Easter, guys. Anyways, I'm gonna talk about the same thing I'm talking about. I had a councilman over my house and a couple other people over my house to talk to the Metro. They weren't gonna talk to me, so they made an appointment with a girl that's pretty good-looking, and I think that was the motive behind their hacienda that they played on me, because we waited there, they never showed up. We never even seen them there. They did it at Losinger High School when we were all there. What they did, they canceled it. When there's a lot of people there, they don't show up, and they just never even showed up. And I think it's a tragedy that they can't even show up to a meeting where I asked them to come to my house. You realize it's 140 residents that are gonna be affected by that railroad track just on this side. 140 is gonna be affected by it. If it goes down Hawthorne, it's one, maybe two, but there's 140 on that side. Redondo was totally against it. I stood at the ballot boxes time and time again and asked, "How did you vote?" Where they said, "And when we first had these meetings with Harold Hoffman was there, they said, 'We don't want this going through our city.'" And they just kept going. You can't trust these guys. You guys think they're your friends? They're not your friend. They're really scum cockroaches. They're the rats in the woodwork there. They are nasty-ass people. They don't trust you, they won't even talk to me, and I wanted to show them. And I said, "Hey, here's my property, 42 feet. Condon Avenue, any street in Longdale is 40 feet, right? 40 feet, you better measure it." Condon Avenue was given to the residents in Longdale. Why don't we got that 40 feet out there? That extra 40 feet that was there? That 40 feet should be our property. If they're gonna put that train there that we gotta hear every single day, every three minutes, it's ridiculous. And if your lawyer can't do it, I'll get a lawyer that can. If they cannot even ask them questions or have them show up at meetings when we ask them to, and they call us, and I scheduled my time where I was working out in Temecula and I had to come back in here, I'm 70 years old already. This is craziness. These people are destroying my life. It was bad enough I had to go through it with Debbie Holland, and now I have to go through it with this? This isn't cool. This ain't good. You are supposed to be my representative, not theirs.
Thank you. Is there any else wishing to speak to this body under oral communications? Senator, we're gonna close oral communications at this time and bring it up to the diocese for any comments from the council. Let's start with Councilmember Pat Kearney.
I have two questions. I want to thank everybody that spoke tonight. The video this young man's talking about, or Debbie Robert, you can comment on it, what he sent you?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I can't comment on it, because he reminded me when he told me he's from Eubanks Conservancy. At first, I was kind of cloudy on it. Yeah, so it's a vision plan. Basically, if I'm understanding correctly, they're seeking, I don't know the whole plan, but I know part of the plan is they're seeking to use our media studio to do videos and presentations and things of that nature. That's the part, at least, the city quote-unquote involvement would be. The rest of it, I can't remember exactly what. But there's issues, could be issues with that, from what I'm understanding, and someone would certainly have a conversation with Mr. Lee concerning it. Because basically, what you would have, you would have a private entity, even though it's a nonprofit, but still a private entity using public resources. I don't know what the circumstances around that, if that's something that the city can allow, or what's the parameters? If others decided they have a project too that's just as worthy, would they be required, well, would be required, I should say, to allow them to use the studio as well? I think that's really the main issue. I thought someone had communicated with Mr. Lee that, it seemed like our last city manager had communicated that, my understanding, what his position on that was.
Mr. Mayor and council, we can check into that. This is the first I've become made aware of the situation, but I can check with Ray Ladd and follow up with Mr. Lee.
And someone will follow up with Mr. Lee. Thank you.
That's pretty much the gist.
Okay, and then my sentiments exactly, Jay. They should have, I think somebody had to call Metro here. They had to call Metro to find out if there was a meeting, where they were at, and they said they weren't showing up. I never did trust Metro. Till the day I die, I would never trust Metro. They're nothing but conniving liars, and all they want is, they're trained on our city, our city. But can we set up a meeting here at the city with Metro, and then let's surprise them with our residents being here? Let's throw the table on them and see if we can schedule a meeting. I don't know if it's legal, maybe the city attorney over there in the corner, smiling, he's laughing, he knows what I'm talking about.
My suggestion, as Jay was speaking, is we're getting ready to meet, I saw emails today, on either the 10th or the 17th will be our next meeting with Metro. I would like the information, who it was that was supposed to come out and meet you, Jay? What date and what time?
It wasn't me, sorry, Ron. It wasn't me. It was my neighbor, but she called me to help her.
I would like all the specifics.
I'll give you everything I have. I presented to them.
I would appreciate it, because I would like to ring their bell on that. I like everybody else. I don't want the train, period. I don't care which direction, I don't want it. But we are, I would like to be able to hold them responsible for making a meeting and then not keeping up.
Yeah, not keeping it.
Well, I still have to have a meeting with the council and Metro representatives, and then we'll have our residents here. I know the young lady Jay's talking about, she was in a walkthrough, and she is very attractive, and I see why Metro's, you know.
Is it true?
I'm not, you know, not a lot, yeah. So, I'd like to see if we can set up a meeting with Metro, besides the two representatives, the whole council as a whole, and have a meeting with them, and then we can bring Jay and whatever her name is, Miss Gorgeous, and with us, and anybody else who wants to speak.
Mr. Mayor and council will put an item, we'll coordinate as well. We have the subcommittee that meets with them, but we'll also ask them to come down and meet with the council, do a presentation, and notify the residents to come down.
Actually, instead of coming here, I would like for them to go to the site, because I was one of the council members, along with Jared, that waited half an hour for them to tell us that they were not showing up. That's very disrespectful, especially if they knew there was gonna be more than just one person meeting with them. They need to see the site, not just come in here and give us a presentation. They need to walk those 10, 12 blocks that it's gonna be affected.
So, I understand, we still want an agendized item for them to come in here, but also to meet with the residents that they missed on the meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
They need to meet with the citizens and maybe one or two of our representatives, not just the citizen and them. Someone from the city needs to be involved in it.
No problem, I'll facilitate that as well. We'll talk to Metro, and that'll take some time to set up with them, I'm sure, but we'll get that set up.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll pass it on to my colleague to my right.
All right. Councilwoman Suarez.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody that came out. I'm hoping that RJ showing up and Gary, and we can work through, I know, the ongoing cases and come to a resolution there. Pat answered my, or asked the questions, or Councilmember Kearney, sorry, answered the questions I had regarding the, or I think our mayor also regarding the private use of government equipment. My other question, too, is the equipment itself. I'm not quite sure how up-to-date it is. From what I understand, this technology is fast-evolving, so I'm not quite sure even if our equipment is that great to begin with.
No, it is.
And then, no, I definitely echo those sentiments. That's terrible that Metro would show up or not even cancel in advance if they were gonna cancel the meeting, so definitely need to put that on the books, and those specific residents, the concerns that were brought up, the easements or the encroachments and all of those questions do need to be asked and answered. And with that, I'll pass it along.
Councilwoman Cuevas.
Councilmember Kearney and Suarez already said everything. I just want to thank everybody for coming out and speaking.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Hoffman-Gorman.
I think they hit everything. Gary and RJ's, let's work and get this thing resolved so that it's in the best interest of our community all the way around. And the city manager said that he would go ahead and look into, and I'm going to wait upon that report, but thank you for coming out tonight and seeing us. Jay, again, please get me that information, because before the 10th or the 17th, when we have our subcommittee meeting, that is one of the things that I want to bring up to them again, is something that they've dropped the ball. Any information you have, the time, the date, everything.
Perfect.
Perfect, thank you.
Rhonda, it was April 13th at 4:00 p.m.
And who was the, I don't know Mrs. Gorgeous.
It's, she's, I don't know her name either, but she was in our walkthrough.
But she must be the contact person that they used.
Correct.
Counsel, a mayor and counsel, it's Breckenridge. Breckenridge, I think, is Glenn's Breckenridge family.
Glenn's wife.
He's talking about the Metro contact person. She's not the Metro contact person. Breckenridge.
No, they're the resident that they originally scheduled.
I know, I think she was asking for Mayor Protim, the contact person.
I'm looking for who at Metro said that they would come out and meet, because that's the person I want to bring up in the meeting.
Yeah, it's not that person.
If you hear that from your neighbor, can you let me know?
She just said Metro was coming out, sorry.
If you ask her again.
She didn't have her name, she said, "We're coming out."
Yeah.
And then, on my camera, a Metro car came up the street, seen us, and go back down the street.
If you could all get to have a conversation with her.
I can send you the camera footage, too.
Well, I just, I would like to have anything that I can kind of name at Metro as to them not following through, like taking trouble.
Okay. So, normally, we don't go back and forth with the audience, so this is a little special, Jay, for days, for day only.
Robert.
We appreciate that, and thank you for bringing that to our, I'm sorry, you finished yours. And thank you for bringing that to our attention, Jay. Yeah, definitely gotta watch Metro, we've learned that throughout the years. You gotta definitely watch them and watch what they're saying in different communities as well. That might be contradiction to what they are telling our community concerning the sea line extension, but we will bring that up when we have our subcommittee, the updates that they give us periodically, and hold them accountable for basically flaking, you know, on our residents. We don't like that, appreciate that at all. I'm gonna say to RJ's Construction, the representative, as well as the city, I know we've been working through these issues, there's a lot of issues to work through. We're gonna continue to work through these issues so that all the issues can be remedied over at the property, and so the business can continue, and that the residents can continue to enjoy peace and quiet and tranquility, however you say it, in their neighborhood, and that none of the municipal codes are being violated that disturbs the peace and the quality of life in their community. So, I look forward to getting updates and getting that resolved. Also, someone mentioned Caltrans, I forget who, maybe Mr. Adams again, mentioned Caltrans. Yeah, Caltrans was out cleaning up again, once again, they do their periodic... Yeah, Caltrans was out cleaning up again, once again, they do their periodic cleanups. As you see more of that happening in our city and other cities too, since the governor, I forget how much it was, a couple of millions or what have you, put in a budget for cleanup activities or what have you. So we're glad to see that they're, they're out and they're out of force periodically to clean up and to abate the homeless encampments as well as just to maintain the vegetation that's out of control in those areas. So I'm glad to see that they were out in full force over the last couple of days. With that, that's all I have for comments from the council. And I will move the agenda at this time. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. The consent calendar, there's six items on the consent calendar. Before we adopt this consent calendar, if it is the pleasure of this body, normally we don't read the items for the consent calendar, but this one is, I think, worthy of pointing out one of the items on the consent calendar because he wasn't able to make it tonight. We do have a resident that's turning 100 years of age, April 21st. Charles Mc, Charles Mack, MacQuary, we call him Mack for short. He's a longtime resident of the city of Longdale. He's known as Mack. He's going to be celebrating his 100th birthday on the 21st of this month. Mack is the owner of the Mack Old Time Radio Museum in Longdale. Years ago, he donated a collection of unique radios to the city of Longdale. His generosity has enabled these special radios to be displayed at City Hall for all to enjoy, including future generations. Each radio seems to have a story, and those who see the collections are quite amazed to see the radios from their own childhood. The city is very thankful for this wonderful display. Mack is a war, a World War II veteran and is an author and a past speaker at the Longdale Memorial Day event. He has been active in other events in the Longdale community as well. On this very special occasion, we send our congratulations to Mack on his 100th, upcoming 100th birthday, and we hope his birthday would be especially happy, and we wish him all the best, Mack. From all of us at the city of Longdale, the residents as well as city council, congratulations and happy 100th birthday, and we'll, we'll clap. And that would be on the consent calendar that we will send him this certificate of happy birthday as well. With that, I would take a motion concerning the consent.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent.
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion's been made by Kearney that we approve the consent calendar and seconded by Suarez. Is there any discussion on the consent calendar? Seeing none, with the council, please vote. I mean, yeah.
All right, back to the register.
For the consent calendar, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Secretary Clerk. Next item on the agenda is, this is a public hearing, a public hearing concerning amendment to the Longdale Municipal Code to comply with the requirements of Senate Bill 9. Let's have the staff report.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor Pauline Miles and city council members and the public. Jared Chavez with the Community Development Department. The, on March 21st, 2022, the city council adopted Urgency Ordinance 118622, a 45-day moratorium establishing regulations to approve subdivisions of single-family lots and construction of second units and single-family lots according to Senate Bill 9. Staff is now requesting additional time to develop comprehensive rules and regulations to be incorporated into the municipal code. If approved, the proposed 10-month and 15-day extension will become effective immediately upon adoption. Staff recommends that, to conduct a public hearing, determine that Ordinance 118222 is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and pursuant to Division 13 of Public Resource Code and Government Code Sections 6585.21 and 66411.7, because an ordinance adopted to implement rules of Senate Bill 9 is not considered to be a project under Division 13. And finally, adopt by a four-fifth vote of the city council interim ordinance, ordinance number 1188-22, extending the 45-day interim urgency ordinance number 118622 to 10 months and 15 days. And that concludes staff report. Staff is available for any questions.
Okay, thank you for that staff report. Are there any questions of the staff before, or open the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, it is 7:09. This public meeting is now, this public hearing is now open. Are there any wishing to provide any comments or testimony in this, into this matter? You can, may do so at this time. Yes, sir, please start by giving us your name, please.
Gary Adams. Not necessarily a comment, I would just like an explanation as to what this change means as far as construction of new residential properties.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
I can give you an explanation. We have the draft ordinance, and if you like, I can send you the information and we can talk about it.
Sounds great, thank you.
But the answer to that question though is, we're extending the 45-day moratorium under state law. We have to extend it, because obviously we don't have enough time to put together comprehensive ordinance for Senate Bill 9, so we need additional time, 10 months and 15 days to continue doing it. And I just want to mention to the council, remember, the city is comprised of R2 zoning, 89% of it approximately, and only less than 25% is comprised of R1 zoning, which SB9 would be more applicable to. Because we already allow two units on each lot, and if you have an 8,000 square foot lot, you can put three units with two-car garage in each, for each unit. That's it.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any others wishing to provide any comments in this matter? Okay, at this time, I'm going to declare the public hearing to be closed. It's now 7:10, the public hearing is closed. Let's bring it up to the council for any deliberations on this, this matter.
If there's any, I'll make a motion to accept the staff recommendation.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been a motion that we adopt the staff recommendation by Kearney and seconded by Suarez. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in, okay, with the council, please vote. I just like seeing that phrase, that's all.
For item number seven, motion passes unanimously.
Next item on the agenda is also a public hearing regarding consideration of an urgency ordinance to establish the rules and regulations for car wash facilities. Let's have the staff report.
Hi, Mayor and council members. Jared, again, this is, the city's, the city drafted an urgentity ordinance prohibiting car wash facilities within the city of Longdale. Staff request, is requesting that the city council impose a 45-day moratorium on the approval, expansion, intensification, or relocation of car wash facilities to allow staff to conduct research and analysis on the impacts of car wash facilities within the community. The Longdale Municipal Code allows car wash facility, facilities within the, within an approved special use permit within the C3, C4, and CM commercial manufacturing zones. However, the Longdale Municipal Code does not contain specific findings and requirements for, for the subject land use. So the moratorium would not prohibit the renewal of a business license for an existing car wash facility, wishing to maintain, maintain the establishment. However, it would impose the, the moratorium into new expansion, intensification, or relocations of existing car wash facilities. Staff recommends that city council conduct a public hearing and determine that ordinance number 1120, 118922 is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and adopt by four-fifths vote of the city council ordinance number 118922 regulating car wash facilities. And that concludes staff report.
Okay, thanks for the staff report. Are there any questions of the staff report before I open the public hearing?
Just a point of clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
This is just for, for example, if someone, an existing car wash already submitted an application for expansion. This is only for new applications.
That's correct. It would go into effect as soon as this, the 30 days after the ordinance.
Just for clarification, Mayor and Council, this does not affect existing operations, existing uses, or previously approved uses? Those are already done. Any new proposals that would come through would be impacted by, or any expansion of any existing facilities within the city of Longdale would not, would be prohibited from expanding until we develop some development performance standards, they say, in land use? So, you know, distance, noise, distance from residence, all those things which we don't have in our codes.
Okay, with that, it is now 7:14. I'm going to declare this public hearing to be opened. The public hearing is now open. Are there any wishing to testify or provide comments into this matter? Please do so at this time.
Gary Adams, again. I have grave concerns about waiving environmental considerations on any future car washes. I know for a fact that when Bellagio's expansion on Manhattan Beach Boulevard was approved by this council, that they waived the environmental considerations. It is a fact that the northern portion of the lot previously contained gasoline dispensaries and it had a lube shop, which includes other hazardous fossil petro, petrochemicals, and yet they weren't required to do any testing, nor understand it at all. This is obnoxious to me. The environmental laws are in place for a purpose and they should be fully addressed, and waiving them, I think, is absolutely wrong.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you for the comments.
Mr. Mayor and Council.
Staff want to respond to that?
There's, we're not waiving any requirements for the car washes. We're waiving requirements for this proposed moratorium.
Yeah, right, just a point of clarification that
Right.
The waive is for this moratorium proposal, not for any car washes that want to be approved in the future. Okay, with that, anyone else wishing to testify to this matter? Seeing none, it's now 7:16. The public hearing is now closed. I'm going to bring it up to the council for any discussion, the council on this matter.
I'll make a motion to go with the staff recommendation.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion's been made that we adopt the staff's recommendation by Kearney and seconded by Quivers. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, with the council, please vote.
Already did.
It's not showing up. There we go, okay, thank you. Okay, for item number eight, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda, item number nine, is approval of adjustments to the 2021-22 budget for staff reclassification. Let's have the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the city council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. This presentation concerns the approval of an adjustment to the 2021-2022 budget for a staff reclassification for a code enforcement officer 1 to a code enforcement officer 2. Due to staffing changes over the past year, as well as due to the economic challenges created as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, there were reasons to hold on recommending this reclassification sooner. However, now that things have stabilized in terms of staffing levels, I feel it is appropriate to recommend this reclassification at this time. As I stated, this is to reclassify an existing staff member from his current classification as a code officer 1 to a code enforcement officer 2. This staff member has been with the city since 2002 and has held his current position since 2006. He has initiated code cases on behalf of the residents of Longdale for violations ranging from property maintenance concerns to illegal construction, non-permitted business practices, and all other violations of the municipal code. This staff member has closed more code cases than any code officer in the history of the city, including those officers that have worked here longer and with a current code enforcement officer 2 classification. The additional cost calculations for this reclassification and salary increase have already been shown in the 2021-2022 budget, and the additional funding as a result of the COLA increase is also included in the contingency reserve. Staff recommends that the city council approve this reclassification and I'm available to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you for that report. Are there any questions of the staff report on item nine? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of this body concerning?
I'll make a motion to go with the staff recommendation. The individual should have been done a long time ago, but there was pushback on our city manager's office.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made, made by Kearney that we adopt the staff recommendation concerning such and seconded by Quivers. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, with the council, please vote.
For item number nine, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, madam. The next item, item 10, award of a construction contract to Superior Paving Markings. Let's have the staff report.
Good evening, local mayor and members of the council. I have a review of the staff request for the order of the construction contract and inspection services for the city of 2021-22 Citywide Sign Replacement Project. Based on the finding of the local road safety plan, the city council approved the plans and the spec at the end of March 21st, the city council meeting, and staff analyzed the project in three different construction locations the day after. March on, April 12th, staff received only one bid from Superior paving marking incorporated. Prior to the bidding opening, the staff did contact several contractors to see who will bid, and many of the contractors declined to submit due to a couple of reasons. One, because their workload or work schedule, and number two is that because of the expedited construction schedule of this particular project due to the lapsing Prop C fund that several contractors declined to bid. Based on these staff evaluations, Superior paving marking incorporated did submit the lowest responsible bid for the project in an amount of $933,000. Staff also sent the request for proposal to the consulting firm, receiving two proposals, reviewed the proposals, and selected RKA Consulting Group to work for at $106,002,750. So with that, staff recommends the council to award the construction contract in an amount of $933,000 to Superior paving marking incorporated, award the construction management service contract in an amount of $106,002,750 to RKA Consulting Group, approve the construction contingency amount of $186,662 for the project to avoid any delays in facilitating timely completion of the project, and authorize the director of finance to decrease the appropriation for the Prop C fund from the Redondo Beach Improvement Project by $719,168. Authorize the director of finance to appropriate that $719,168 from Prop C unappropriated fund balance to the CIP budget for this particular project, which is 2122 Citywide Sign Replacement Project. And finally, authorize the director of finance to approve $507,078 for Major M appropriated fund balance to the CIP fund for this project. One quick note on the fund balance is that even though we're using over $500,000 from the Major M fund, that the city has been awarded with only $1,000 on the signed project. So once we receive that fund, we'll utilize that fund and, and then replenish the Major M fund. So with that, staff.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Public Works Director, Mr. Lee. Are there any discussions on, on this item, on item 10?
Mayor, I have some questions.
Okay.
So the Prop C and the Major M bonds will never, not, not ready to expire, correct?
It's not the Major M, it's the Prop C.
See.
The Prop C on dice to expire and
When is that?
That will be June 30th of this year.
Okay, because I don't like single bids. I don't like double bids. There has to be more people out there that bid for this. It's, it's, the old school, when Rhonda's dad was here, Councilman Rudolph, Robert, Jim and I, we would never accept one bid, bid, bid. We would not pay this, this price. And this one with the two, we still would like to see, I like to see three. If we come back with two, then we know we're the only two. But the one, I have serious concerns about. There has to be more people than one person out there wanting to bid.
So now, what, can you recap for me, what was the, I know you received one bid, but
Because of the Prop C lasting due date of June 30th, that the contract that the contractor will have approximately sixty days to sixty calendar days, which will be about forty-five working days to complete about seven hundred thousand dollar worth of signage. And a lot of the, a lot of the contractors are already committed to their biggest work that they did it. So that's the reason why a lot of the contractors didn't bid for this particular project. That was the, the big criteria, that because we have to do approximately seven hundred thousand dollars of signage placement within sixty days to avoid lapsing of Prop C.
So, if the work started mid-May, it goes through mid-June, or end of first of July, that's still using the funds, correct?
No, it has, the work has to be completed.
Completed? I, I just have
They have, we're working with contractors to tell them start first of May and so that they can do the May and June.
And we're doing how many signs?
Total across from about fifteen hundred signs.
And, and the way the signs are now in the city, they're aluminum base, flabby aluminum sign, so why would it take more than sixty days to complete this? I understand that, 'cause they're bolted in, they're not the old steel signs, cement in the ground, that's a flimsy one. I don't know if it should take more than sixty days to do these signs.
Because it's not just the replacement of the poles, and what needs to be done is that they need to take out the old poles and they need to put in a new poles plus the other concrete work on a lot of these things.
I'm just, still, I'm gonna vote against this. That's my feeling.
Well, let me, let somebody else get in first, and then we'll have anything they want to add. So the, the issue is that, that this company is the only company that felt they would have enough time to complete it before, on June thirtieth, and that's probably why the other, other companies did not bid?
Correct. And again, this project was not budgeted at the beginning of the year. We were just notified, I think it was late February, of the lapsing fund, and that's the reason why we had to put these specs together and the staff had to put specs together and put all these things together, so that's the reason why we couldn't do this thing before. If we knew this fact, considering the end of the year, this is a fiscal year, and so last year, then we would have planned this and it would have been more contractors participating.
Mayor and council, I just wanted to remind you that as there's been a lot of turnover in the finance department, so the notification came late on the lapsing of the funds, and unfortunately, as Councilman Kearney's pointed out, we only got one bid or so, but it's, we use it or we lose it. Is that correct, Julian?
Correct, and one of the comfort level is that I have worked with, with the contractors before, so I've been doing some jobs on my past employment, so I know that they could, they could, that could complete the project without the, the time period.
Well, let me ask you this, as far as the price is concerned, you, you probably familiar with about how much this contract should be? Does this fall in line with what you think it should?
Yes, it's actually much lower than what we anticipated based on the consultants and the engineers estimate. It was about one point one million dollars that we were thinking about using, but the total construction became almost twenty percent of it.
Okay, so although only one company bid, you feel comfortable that it's actually under what you was anticipating?
Correct. They are lowest and responsible better, so I feel comfortable.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Could we just make sure that we have a list of what funds are about to expire and that staff is aware of that? That way, it'll give us more time to prepare, because, like you said, we went through several finance people, but we should have a set spreadsheet that says measure C or D or whatever you wanna call it expires on this date, and this is how much, so whoever comes in is aware of what's going on, and they don't have to search everywhere.
Well, definitely, that's not a problem. We have the budget that we put out and the, all the criteria related to that budget, which is coming up in our next item here on the CAFER, but they, we definitely could put that information out. I know because of the turnover, unfortunately, and not, and the turnover in the staff, and then we had several finance directors, that information was not sent over to finance, or I'm sorry, to Public Works in time to get this information out.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's a good point.
I am aware that's in the budget, but we don't open the budget every day. But if we have a spreadsheet on our bulletin board that says this day it's gonna expire, then you could plan ahead, three months, four months ahead, because I'm sure don't look at the budget on, on a monthly basis.
Understood, we'll, we'll put something together with the departments, making sure they're aware of what funds expire and whatnot.
Thank you.
I would also like to add, I think in the future, I agree with Pat, we should have a minimum of three bids. So, this has got us between a rock and a hard place, it really does. And so, in the future, I want staff to also understand a minimum of three bids.
Thank you.
And one other point.
Yes, ma'am.
Make sure that Excel sheet is a master and not just one department shared, so that everybody knows.
Yeah, but we'd, I'm thinking something similar, we do one of the contracts with the city clerks off, out, we're miss, we're short city clerks too, office, we, we have a missing body there, so that usually keeps up on these contracts. But something like that on these expiring budgetary issues, that's a good, we have a master for that as well.
Okay, thank you for that input. Yes, I always encourage, obviously, for us to have as many bidders as possible. In this case, I feel comfortable, even though it's unfortunately only had one responded, but I feel comfortable that the staff is comfortable that this is actually under what we anticipated it would be. So, although it's only one person who, entity who has bid it for it, it does fall under in that we're not paying too much for the service, and so at this time, I'm, I feel comfortable with it. So unless there's any further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, and what was the motion?
Staff recommendation.
Okay, okay, just making sure.
A through F.
You don't have to read all that.
I'll second that.
So the motion's been made by, for us that we adopt the staff's recommendation to award the contract and seconded by Quavis, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, with the council, please vote.
The motion passes with Councilmember Kearney voting no.
Thank you. Item eleven, street parking, street parking study on Mansell Avenue, let's have staff report.
All right, we have the council again, this item before is a staff evaluation of the Mansell Avenue Street Parking Study. While the council's request, staff has hired consultants to evaluate the street parking issue at the Mansell Avenue just north of Manhattan Beach Boulevard. Based on the WZ Zero Engineering's observation of the traffic data and evaluation, park administration on the east side of Mansell should be, should be removed. Therefore, staff recommend the city council to approve the removal of the existing two signs. There's no parking eight AM to four PM, Friday on the east side of Mansell Avenue, should be removed.
Okay, thank you for that report. Is there any discussion on this item? If not, I'll entertain a, a motion on item eleven.
I'll make, go with staff recommendation.
The motion's been made by Kearney that we adopt staff recommendation.
I'll second that.
And seconded by Hoffman-Gorman, is there any discussion? Seeing none, with the council, please vote.
Motion, oh, sorry, for item number eleven, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Item twelve is approval and amendment to the citywide salary and pay schedule and salary and benefit resolution for central management.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Before you this evening for your consideration and approval is the Second Amendment to the Salary and Benefits Resolution for the Central Management Team and Amendment to the Citywide Salary Pay Schedule for Fiscal Year 2021-2022. In March of 2019, City Council approved the First Amendment to the Central Management Employees or CMT Salary and Benefit Resolution to provide for a salary increase to maintain pay equity and to assist with the recruitment efforts at that time. Staff is now recommending further amendments to the CMT Salary Resolution to include a two percent salary increase effective July one, 2021, a one percent salary increase effective July one, 2022, and a one-time lump sum, non-perceivable taxable ARPA payment of two thousand dollars. The total cost to implement this, this amendment for this current fiscal year is nineteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars. The city has the ability to use ARPA funds for this one-time ARPA payment. Therefore, the total impact to the general fund for this, for the salary adjustments will be eleven thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars. The second year costs will be budgeted during the 2022-2023 budget process. Approval of the salary increase will trigger the need to also approve and adopt an amendment to the previously adopted citywide salary and pay schedule for fiscal year 2021-2022. Staff respectfully recommends council adopt Resolution CC twenty-two oh four dash oh, dash zero one eight, amending the salary and benefits for the central management team, and also Resolution twenty-two oh four dash oh nineteen, amending the citywide pay schedule for fiscal year 2022, as well as allocate nineteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars from the general fund for the salary adjustment, adjustments. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, are there any questions of the report? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of this body concerning this item?
I will reluctantly make a motion to staff recommendation.
Motion's been made by Kearney that we approve the staff recommendation.
I'll second that.
And seconded by Quavis, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, with the council, please vote.
For item number twelve, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you, ma'am. Item thirteen is approval and authorization, proven, authorized the purchase of a citywide telephone equipment and service plan. Let's have a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This evening, staff is recommending council's approval to purchase approximately eighty-nine desktop phones and data service plan for Verizon Wireless, Wireless through a cooperative agreement, as well as allocate fifty-eight thousand from the Restricted Urban Development Fund to the General Operations Fund to replace the citywide telephone system. The city has, has utilized its current landline telephone system and service plans through AT&amp;T since 2001. With the reoccurring system failures, disconnection issues, and inadequate technology, staff is recommending replacing the citywide telephone system as soon as possible before a complete system failure. Staff researched current technology and determined the best cost-effective options to meet the city's current and future technology needs and identified the Verizon Wireless One Talk 4G LTE desk phone. This phone system is the first advanced wireless desk phone available in the U.S. that will provide a turnkey telecommunications system for the city. The 4G LTE desk phone works like a cellphone connecting to so, cellphone top, I'm sorry, cellphone tower as well as the internet, which allows for multiple connection points in case one connection is lost. There will be no interruption to city service since there is no need to install any network cabling. The total cost to purchase the eighty-nine phones is estimated to be approximately fifteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars, this which include taxes and an application of an incentive credit of four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. There is no need for maintenance support or software service costs since we are purchasing the phones, which has a twelve-month warranty. The city would need to purchase a data service plan, which is an ongoing monthly cost of approximately two thousand, four hundred and five dollars for two years, which will replace most of the current landline telephone service plan that we currently have with AT&amp;T. The funding source for the telephone equipment upgrade was approved by City Council during the fiscal year 2022-2021 budget process for fifty-eight thousand dollars and was intended to be carried over for 2021-2022. However, due to staff turnover, the funds will not, was not reallocated. As such, in order to complete this project, staff is recommending a one-time transfer from the Restricted Urban Development Fund to the general fund to complete all aspects of the project upgrade. In summary, staff recommends the city council authorize the finance department to allocate fifty-eight thousand from the Restricted Urban Development Fund to the general fund to cover the necessary costs to complete the project and approve and authorize the city manager or designate to purchase eighty-nine citywide equipment, eighty-nine, sorry, eighty-nine citywide telephone equipment and data service plan through a cooperative agreement with Verizon Wireless. This concludes my report, and staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that report, are there any discussions in the report? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Quavis.
We are getting rid of the landlines, what if the entire system goes down? Are we even keeping one landline, just in case?
We, we are keeping some landlines for emergencies, so in our emergency operating center, we have, I think, about nine landline phones there, and we will be keeping most.
Okay, and that's through AT&amp;T or?
Yes.
Very good. Any additional discussion?
If not, I'll make a motion, happily make a motion, that we go with staff recommendation for the phones, because, you know, it's getting kinda sad, we called down here and the lines are all down.
Yeah, that's true. So the motion's being happily made by Mr. Pat Kearney. Is yours happily, or what, how you?
Mine is happily, yes.
And, and Quavis is happily seconding the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, council, please vote on this happy motion.
For item number thirteen, motion passes unanimously. It happily passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, let's see how happy we're on this comprehensive annual financial report, item number fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, our, our auditors are gonna come up and join us and do a presentation.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. First, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you for letting us to continue to be your auditors. It was a joy to work with the city, a little bit of flips with the change in the finance directors, but we made it through. All right, so we'll be presenting the auditor's report on the financial statements for the annual comprehensive financial report. And so, the objective of our audit is to express an opinion on management's financial statements. So we gather and evaluate appropriate audit evidence to obtain reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance over the financial statements and whether they are free of material misstatements. And our opinion is as to whether they're presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The audit standards that we follow are generally accepted auditing standards, generally accepted government auditing standards, and the uniform guidance as applicable. This year, the city did not meet the threshold to qualify to have a single audit, which is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal funds in a year. So, just to lay out the responsibilities, the responsibility of management is for the preparation of the financial statements, complete and accurate financial records, and the comprehensive framework of internal control, including controls to prevent and detect fraud. The governing body, which is yourself, has a fiduciary responsibility to the city, and it ensures management fulfills its obligations for internal control and financial reporting. Our responsibility as your auditors is to obtain, again, reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatements. We examine on a test basis evidence supporting those amounts and disclosures made. We assess accounting principles used, estimates made, evaluate the overall financial statement presentation, and in the end, to express an opinion on the city's financial statements. So this is a little brief overview of our audit process. So, you know, we update our understanding of the city, we review controls and other various aspects of compliance. It involves inquiries with management, with governance, you all received an inquiry letter this year, you know, in regards to, you know, your knowledge of any or suspected fraud, or, you know, inklings of such. We conduct detailed audit of financial records, we inspect the relevant source documents, make inquiries about various unusual or significant transactions that occurred during the year. We confirm cash and investments, and we also perform analytical procedures and use a data analytic tool on your cash disbursements process. And we also read the minutes of your boards that we have, all read all the minutes. Our final opinion over the financial statements, this year for the annual comprehensive financial report, we've given an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. And now what that means is that is a clean opinion, which means that we were not made aware of any material misstatements inside of your financial statements. So they are presented So they are presented fairly. That means estimates are reasonable, disclosures are proper, significant accounting policies have been consistently applied. We've also issued these other various reports, excuse me. The Gigas Report, which is the report over internal controls, the SASS 114 Communication to Governance. No uniform guidance report this year. As I stated, the city did not qualify for a single audit. The GAN Limit Report, and then a report on material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. We're available for questions if you have any.
Okay, are there any questions of the report?
I just have one question. That slideshow should have been in this binder.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no. I mean, I don't know how many of you have read this whole thing, but I did. Slideshow would have been a lot helpful if we didn't know this. But that's it.
Let me, is there any other questions? Okay, I was looking for the, I saw it in here, but maybe you can paraphrase it for me. If you would, if you would sum that up in a paragraph, would you? I don't want to say it because I might be using the wrong terminology. That's good, right?
An unmodified opinion that we give on the financial statements is the highest level of assurance that we can provide. It ultimately means we didn't find anything that was materially misstated. There were no inappropriate or omitted disclosures. Management worked well with us to provide us with all the information available for us to come to session assessment.
Very good. You have that well rehearsed.
Get that question a lot.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions of the report? Okay, thank you for your audit report, and thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Terry Shea. I'm the partner, and I just want to thank you guys as well for the opportunity to serve. And it is a very good, and it's a happy report where you added over $4 million to the general fund fund balance, so that is very good.
Very good. Thank you. So with that due, let's make sure we, we just can receive and file this, Mr. City Attorney. Okay, without any objection, we will receive and file that report. Okay. Next item, item 15, updating updated illegal fireworks suppression plans, fireworks suppression plans. Let's have a staff report. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, distinguished members of the City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. As we approach summer months, we anticipate that there will be an abundance of illegal fireworks as the Fourth of July holiday draws near. With that in mind, I would like to go over with you plans for the 2022 illegal fireworks suppression detail. After last year's detail, I met with the deputies and Lieutenant Leo and discussed what practices from that plan were very effective and which practices were not so effective. This year, we again plan to bring in six overtime deputies to work the weekend or the holiday and rent out undercover vehicles so that the deputies can catch violating parties in the act of lighting fireworks. And administrative citations will again be issued by deputies with all illegal fireworks being confiscated. City will also again do a mass information campaign, which will include posting notices on all social media sites, the city webpage, and on the city's cable channel. Banners will also be placed over Hawthorne Boulevard, and the message trailer will again be put onto city streets. Deputies will also be given a list of all violating parties who received citations from last year so that these properties can be patrolled for illegal fireworks use this year. One new practice for your consideration tonight is the use of advertising on social media to solicit the purchase of illegal fireworks. Ads would be run offering payment for illegal fireworks, and a meeting would be set up by staff. When the violating party arrives to make the sale, deputies would arrive to issue a citation and confiscate the illegal fireworks. An additional practice from last year that presented a challenge was the shifting of the special assignment officers or SAO's team from their day shifts into night shifts so far ahead of the holiday. This resulted in two months when the SAOs were unable to focus on the normal duties of gang suppression, homeless outreach, vehicle and traffic enforcement, and school security. During this eight weeks of such a time, only two administrative citations were issued for illegal fireworks. One of the options for your consideration tonight is to shorten the shift of schedules for less than eight weeks. We anticipate that this year's plan will cost about $32,000 for overtime deputies, rental cars, increased gas prices, and advertising costs to communicate information about the plan to the public. And I can answer any questions at this time. There are three options that we presented for you. One is to keep the existing length of shift on the SAO time. One is to shorten it to a month before the holiday. One is to shorten it to two weeks before the holiday. But any amount of time is open for discussion. Also, the only new introduction would be the use of soliciting to purchase illegal fireworks. We would have staff set up and put a phone number that's available. We would post it on Craigslist, Facebook, things like that. When people call saying they want to sell fireworks, we'd set up a sting and we'd confiscate the fireworks and write them a ticket. Other cities do do that. We have brought that attention. It's very sneaky, but other cities do do it, and it has been deemed legal. So it's just something to consider. If, you know, if we don't catch anybody, then that's fine, too. It didn't cost us anything. But that's just a consideration that other cities are utilizing to stop fireworks usage. The bigger, the bigger option is the consideration of the SAO is by focusing on fireworks suppression. We move them from their day shifts into night shifts, and that takes them away from school security, traffic enforcement, other things that they do, homeless outreach, and gang suppression. So those are the considerations, and I can answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, who has some questions?
I just have one question right from the get-go. What about, and in years past, we used to have our lieutenant actually hit the ground in going to those areas that are hardest hit. I don't see anything like that in here as far as is what is currently. And then my next part of the question is, in your department, a handbill to somebody's, the neighbor, the areas, and I'm thinking of behind 150 Night there on the east side that gets hit ridiculously every year for weeks on end. Is there any chance that we could put officers in handbills door-to-door? Not just to, hey, don't do it, but when you hear it, contact us. Figure out where it's coming from so that we can, it needs to be to those people that are trying to help us, giving them direction as to how to move forward. Is there any chance that we could put something like that together?
Sure, we absolutely do something like that. To answer the first question, Councilwoman Hoffman-Gorman, the lieutenant did go out with the deputies last year for the entire duration of the suppression detail. Lieutenant Leo was out every night with the deputies. This year, because of changes to the structure of the Sheriff's Department, I don't know that we'll have a dedicated lieutenant to do that this year. I imagine our sergeant would be out there, Ricky Osborne, but I don't know if we'd have a lieutenant.
I'm just not looking for them in the car. I'm looking for them to making contact on the sidewalk to those areas. Again, saying basically the same thing that I want a flyer to say, listen, don't shoot them off. And if somebody in your neighborhood is, so that that person that is shooting them off knows that his neighbors are getting the same thing with the directions on how to get a hold of us and get this thing stopped.
Sure, I think it's a good idea. In fact, we introduced something like that in the first suppression plan. We sort of tabled it because we thought there would be some controversy with having neighbors reporting neighbors. We thought there would be potential for animosity and actually conflict. We could certainly write something and staff could put it out. We did send out mailers last year to every residence. It was fairly costly, though, and it wasn't super effective. A lot of people who got, or got tickets said they had no idea that this was even going on, although we had banners, we had flyers, we had commercials, we had, so I, I imagine there was just one more thing they chose to ignore. I'm sure they did know they weren't supposed to be doing it. We could again, though, like I said, put flyers out, and then we could introduce some way for neighbors to report on other neighbors. It just becomes then sort of, you know, if somebody doing something illegal catches their neighbor filming them doing something illegal, they're probably not going to want that, that's probably not going to be resolved peacefully.
I'm not asking for every house in the city to be those hot, what I'm looking for is those hotspots that we know exist.
Sure. Everybody that got a ticket last year is going to be targeted this year. So we, and the tickets will be $2,000 for those violators if they're caught again. And we are aware of hotspots in the city now. So we can, we inspect specifically, I know Mr. Abrams is very vocal about the fireworks in his area, and we specifically put a car there last year for all the days. Of course, they had to patrol around, but when they were not patrolling, they would sit on his block. We could do that with all the patrol cars we have this year. I guess I would have to get some more thought on, or speak to me individually about what you specifically have in mind with the notification to the, for the residents. But we can certainly do something. I mean, that's, that's a pretty easy one to do. Yeah, and I can, I can speak to Ricky about having the deputies, especially the SAO's possibly passing out flyers, especially if they're, if they're not focused on this shift at nighttime. If they're staying on the day shifts, I would give them more time to actually do that.
I'm not thinking so much the SAO's. I'm thinking of our city.
City staff?
Officers, yes.
We could do that, too. We just, we would pull them off of other duties, but we can, we can certainly find the time to do something like that to canvas and distribute flyers.
Right. That's what I'd be looking for.
Okay. Let me, let me create something, and I can present it at the next, well, the best way to get it to everyone. But yeah, I can put something together.
Mr. Mayor, council, we can send an email. Michael can put something together. We could send it over to the whole council, City Attorney's Office on it, if that's okay.
Thank you. Let's hear from the public before we continue, before we get, I'm too far down, down the road. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Randall Abrams, Longdale resident. The Director of Municipal Services has prepared a detailed illegal fireworks suppression plan that hopefully will reduce the bombardment typically seen on July the 4th. I agree that starting to adjust the shifts of the four SAO deputies eight weeks in advance of July 4th is counterproductive. As mentioned in the staff report, this only resulted in two citations. Even starting this shift change in July, on June 20th might be a bit early, but changing the shifts and adding more deputies from July 1st to the 4th is absolutely necessary. Providing the deputies with a list of past offenders and closely monitoring these addresses should be either deterrent or a way to issue a $2,000 repeat offender citation. Officers should be able to issue administrative citations where physical barriers, i.e. backyard fences, prevent the deputies from seeing who lit the illegal fireworks. In these cases, one might not see who lit the illegal fireworks, but there is a property address where the fireworks were lit that can be used for the citation. Communications of the city's zero tolerance policies of illegal fireworks is crucial. Using all the social media sites are critical, and Longdale should consider updating its Instagram page. On my street, the metal no illegal fireworks signs with a $1,000 fine notification, from my experience, stopped illegal fireworks on my block. If there are more of these signs throughout Longdale, residents cannot claim ignorance about the penalty for disobeying the law. These signs are a constant reminder. One of the most significant recommendations is use of ads to purchase illegal fireworks and then setting up a ton in place to buy the fireworks, then confiscating these illegal fireworks. This type of sting operation is done by other California cities. A significant step forward in curtailing the annual bombardment is to cut off the supply, and this should be a major focus. A recommendation not mentioned is to stop the use of safe and sane fireworks at 10:00 p.m. Currently, Longdale's cutoff is 11:59. This would be in line with the nearby cities, cities of Hawthorne, Gardena, and Inglewood. A 10:00 p.m. cutoff would make it easier for deputies to stop illegal fireworks as there would be no hiding under the cover of safe and sane fireworks after 10:00 p.m. This would also reduce the carcinogens that noise pollution residents are being subjected to even from legal fireworks. Cutting the hours to 10:00 p.m. would also resolve the conflict between Longdale's Code 9.7.020 noise restrictions, whose intent is to limit loud and unreasonable noise after 10:00 p.m. and allowing safe and sane fireworks until 10:00 p.m. seems to be a conflict. The projected cost for this program is $32,000. Since the council refused to place the issue of safe and sane fireworks on the November ballot, we were promised the $11,000 estimated for the ballot measure would go to illegal fireworks suppression. The administrative citation program might actually fund a good portion of the cost as the city has been successful in collecting the majority of these $1,000, of these $1,000 fines. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Again, in God we trust, in partnership with the community. I believe that in order to work within the adverse situation, you deal with it on a level of equal partnership. So why not designate a place where people can come shoot their fireworks? That way, it would be controlled situation. Instead of trying to penalize and being an adversary, try to work with peace and love. Try to say, listen, we're going to be different from all the other cities. We're going to designate a spot where you guys can come shoot your fireworks. It's controlled, and that's it. And to take it a step further, Eubanks Conservatory Music and Arts would be willing to collaborate with you to help. We know the city is under some financial considerations, but Eubanks is doing very well. And rather than be adverse, let's be within love. Let's do things within God. Let's say, listen, if you want to, because they're going to shoot fireworks. People are going to do it. And if you fine them, as this gentleman said, $2,000, that's a lot of money. You see, so why not say, listen, take that money and give it to the city. Come shoot your fireworks. We'll designate a spot where you can, it's controlled, because you know they're going to do it anyway. So thank you for your time and your patience.
Thank you.
I just have a real quick question. Did you say just six more deputies were going to be assigned to, and then how many more?
Okay, so yeah, six were the same as numbers last year. Additionally, the shift puts on our four SAOs, so we might have 10, 10 sheriffs in addition to the regular patrol deputies.
Yeah, but do they ride singly, or do they double up on this particular night?
Part of the plan is that, yeah, they double up, and part of the plan is that the three rental cars are staffed by two units or two deputies. They observe the crime, and then they'll call in a black and white for support, and then they confiscate and write tickets.
So is that enough to coverage all of Longdale from Rosecrans to Artesia with all the?
Well, it's five additional units than we normally have. I mean, we can always say, you know, I don't know. I mean, that's a lot of deputies. It's a.
Doesn't seem like it, though, when, you know, they, obviously, they're not going to ride single for that night for safety reasons.
No, they're specifically in the rental.
I was just wondering how many that really are out there in a unit. But also, I mean, I used to love fireworks, too, not the illegal so much. But also just, we don't take into consideration the animals, elderly PTSD people, veterans, and what have you with these illegal fireworks when they do go off, and how it does affect so many people. I mean, that's just one of the other statements, you know, that I wanted to make. But I was just curious about how many real deputies are, are out there that night. Thank you.
Gary Adams again. I'm not really familiar with the suppression plan actually includes, but I do have concerns about the illegal fireworks. Routinely, historically, they're setting off bottle rockets on my street, which end up on top of my vehicles and on my roof, and I consider that a fire hazard, as well as the roman candles, which are routinely set off. And I also am very concerned, routinely, there's a number of neighbors, and they end up with a pile of crap in the street that they do not clean up, and I don't think that should be allowed. If, you know, if they're setting off safe and sane fireworks, okay, but clean your mess up. Don't leave it in the street. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for all those who provided additional comments on this matter. Let's continue with the council. If anyone want to incorporate any comments from the, that were sparked from the, from the public comment, you may do so as well. Councilman Quavis?
Two things. I'd like to, if possible, bring them in June 20th through the 4th. Could we use our staff also during those shifts, like the late evening, like sundown until like 10:00 p.m. to patrol those days? Is that possible?
Are you talking about like municipal services staff specifically? I patrol, but what would we be doing if we were patrolling? Would we just notify the deputies or? I mean, we, I wouldn't imagine it'd be safe to have staff contacting people doing illegal thing. I mean, we're not, I mean, people who are lighting illegal, they are lighting an illegal firework and often drinking. It's kind of probably, I don't know if I'd want to put city staff in. They're not armed or trained.
Can staff film them and then turn that into?
Yeah, sure, and absolutely.
The deputies will go in and cite them or do whatever.
I am aware of other cities that currently practice that same situation, where they have city staff go out and record, and then they'll just issue a citation the next day. I am not opposed to that. I think it could be good. I just, I would worry about making the contact. And again, you know, when people are doing something illegal and you're filming them doing something illegal, they're, they're not really happy about that, and I would be concerned about the safety of staff.
Let me tell you, on my block, there's two gentlemen that every Fourth of July, they walk down the block filming everybody's firework. And then they stand in the corner, and you could see the illegal ones, and they're filming them. So if you're filming everybody, and then all of a sudden someone. So if you're filming everybody, and then all of a sudden someone blows up an illegal, I mean, you're not going after them. You're just kind of filming.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I'm open to any of these things. I'm not opposed to them. I just, I would have to flesh them out and kind of speak with, with the city attorneys and also with, with lieutenant and the captain to find out the, the safety thoughts on that. But I am aware of other cities that have city staff going out and filming and recording. They're in city trucks and city uniforms when they're going out.
Well, I'm not saying they should dress up in city uniform. They could just be walking down the street. Like, they'll park two blocks down.
Yeah.
You're walking down like a normal citizen.
Yeah.
And you could catch up that way.
Yeah, I can, I can flesh something out. Again, I just, I, I would want to speak to the, our, our law enforcement experts and find out if there's a concern, and also to Sean, if there's a safety concern. Also, the, the staff themselves might be concerned about their own safety. So that's, that's a thought I have.
The other question is, are we able to, the following day, if someone leaves their fireworks, their legal fireworks, in front of their house, not clean them up? Are we able to cite them?
Um, that's, that's one of the challenges we have with other things now with people. If we find a mattress in front of somebody's house, or a water heater, or dresser, or something that's been left out, the person says, oh, it's not mine. I don't know how it got there, you know? So it's kind of hard to pin it on them unless we can tie it to them directly. And if we do have footage of it, us, our recording them doing it, and the mess is still there the next day, then I think we could issue a legal dumping ticket for that. But again, the challenge is we have to be able to tie it to them. Some people light fireworks that, you know, down the street from their house or whatever, things like that. So that, that's the, the challenge with it, because we do find, you know, everyday dumped items that we address it to people, and they're like, oh, I don't know where that came from. I don't know where that two-bedroom set came, where it's on my lawn. Somebody must have put it there in the night. So unless we can prove it, that's, that's the challenge of it.
Okay, thank you.
That happens. Yes, sir.
I like your idea, Sherry, about the code enforcement, but we don't have the staff to do that. We have two code enforcement and two parking enforcement. I don't want to see them taking, being taken away from their daily jobs to do a walkthrough. You know, if you want to do that, we can do that. We can take videos. I know we don't have the staff on that one. And Mr. Lewis? We used to have a fireworks show in Longdale many, many years ago, Robbie. We all know about them.
And they still destroy us?
They got very costly and very outrageous, and one of our school districts decided to raise the price quadruple to use their stadium. So we did away with that. The city owns three parks, but they're not big enough to do fireworks. The other parks that we co-mingle with belong to the school district, another school district, and they don't want to do fireworks in their school. But I like your idea, but we just don't have the space for it. And with that, I like option number two, if you're looking for options.
I like that option as well.
We have options. Okay, options number two.
And while you're all looking at option two, I know we went to get extra sheriff deputies, and the city was told by the Sheriff Department that they don't have extra deputies. They're 200 deputies short. Well, if you, later on in this agenda, you'll see in my letter to Supervisor Holly Mitchell. I belong to ALADS as an outside member, and when ALADS contacted the Board of Supervisors, the Board of Supervisors told ALADS, because they want retention and recruitment, that they'd have no problem. So we're getting contradicting stories from, and we don't have the sheriff deputies right now. I'll just see if we get 10 more. I'd like to see it, but we don't have them. But with that, I pass it back on, you know, I'll get my soapbox.
Okay, you like item two. Any other? Okay, what is the pleasure of this body concerning this item?
Ladies?
A motion to approve item two, which would be June 20th through July 4th.
Okay. I'll second it.
Item two. So the motion's been made?
Item two also includes the, the use of the, the ads. If it's comfortable, okay.
Yes, the, the social media ads. Yeah, right, okay. And then Craigslist. People still use Craigslist? That sounds sus, that sounds suspect.
We're going to hit a whole bunch of them soon.
But anyway, the motion's been made by Quavis and seconded by Mr. Pat Kearney.
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? See, and the council, please vote. They use a Craigslist.
For item 15, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, madam. Next item is items from the, the mayor and city council members. Oh, wait a minute. Okay, that's different from mayor and the city councilman. Kind of close, though. Okay, number 16, the presentation from Mr. Kenneth, Kenneth Miller. You want to tee this up?
Uh, no, I'll let, I'll let Mr. Miller do his presentation.
Longdale Times newspaper.
Hi.
My friend.
First of all, I want to thank Member Quavis for allowing me to come and introduce this idea, which essentially was born out of a number of conversations. One was with the mayor himself. We were having lunch at a local restaurant here on another matter, and I brought the idea up to him. He thought it was a wonderful idea. And then I also was encouraged by the Rams, the Los Angeles Rams, which recently began playing in nearby SoFi Stadium. This is why is it we don't have a newspaper in Longdale? Because I was covering the Rams for another newspaper. And I've been a Longdale resident for around 24 years. My wife and I own a town home here. And it just made sense. This is a business that I've been in for 44 years. I started at the Sentinel at 18, was there in excess of 35 years, left the Sentinel, went to Cleveland, Ohio, ran a newspaper there for four years. And recently, I have an ownership stake in Inglewood today, here in Inglewood. But for me, if I am going to continue doing this business, and, and for the naysayers who said that community newspapers did not work, I can tell you my 44 years' experience, it's quite the contrary. What happened many years ago, when, 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 when there was this notion that all of these newspapers was dying, there were conglomerates that were buying up these newspapers and shutting them down. I've since learned that some of that conglomerate money came from Google and Facebook. And so hence, you have Google and Facebook influencing the closure or shutter of local community newspapers for the sole purpose of being the powerful source of providing information themselves. So equipped with that information, I think Longdale Times is a, it's a perfect time for a city that I've been in for, you know, almost a half, half, 24, 25 years. And there are great stories here in the city of Longdale that never really get told. There are not many cities, countries, or states that can say they had an M V P graduate from one of their high schools, who's going to be a first-ballot Hall of Famer, who's now on the tail end of his career, and who is looking for an opportunity for investment here in Longdale. Okay, Longdale High School girls' basketball team was one of the success stories of all of high school basketball this year. And there was just blurbs of that in the Daily Breeze. So I don't know how, I, okay, so in introducing the newspaper, the Longdale Times, this newspaper will focus all, everything about Longdale. You know, our schools, where our students thrive and excel, our school-aged children will be our primary resources. Kids want to learn how to read, but in order to learn how to read, you have to learn how to write. I learned how to read and write by reading the newspapers as a young kid. And so I know that this concept works. I know that through other partnerships that I've had, particularly with Inglewood Unified School District, that there is an appetite for teaching young people. All journalism is, is communication, and teaching young people how to communicate. So our kids will have the opportunity of telling their stories themselves. That's where, that's, that's why this is not going to cost a lot of money. They'll get the experience of writing for a newspaper. They'll get the exposure of being involved in a newspaper. And hopefully, somewhere down the line, you know, we will be able to encourage them to go to college to pursue that field. The business, our business will be explored in a way that is rare, businesses in the community will be explored in a way that's rarely ever done in newspapers. That means what we will do is, we will go in, and you all will know who it is that's not just owns the business, that's working in the business. Many times, these are people who are in our community, and their stories never get an opportunity to be told. Our precious seniors and trusted servants, you guys, you know, this is not going to be like the LA Times, or the Daily Breeze, or some of the other community newspapers that decides who they want to be elected in a particular office. What this is going to be is a vehicle for you to get your message out, you know, absolutely in a way that is, is pure. And, 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 and we're not going to do endorsements of any elected officials. What we are going to do is to make sure that consistence of this city is aware of what you guys are doing. You know, if it's good, they're going to know about it. If it's bad, they're going to know about it. We're not going to, it's not going to be a rubber stamp for the city of Longdale, but it is going to be a conduit of information for the city of Longdale. I think this city council meeting here tonight is just a pure reflection of how come community newspapers are so important. Everyone in the city council meeting tonight are passionate about the city that they live in. And they come here to tell you guys their stories with hopes that you can change the narrative of what it is that's bothering them in their community. I think Longdale Times would be an outstanding outlet for many of the people, some of the people who are in this ring. This is just a brief executive summary. As I've indicated, I've been in this business for 44 years. This will be headed by me. The writers will be students from our local high schools, and in some place, sometimes, there'll be young kids from our elementary school to give them an opportunity to write. I, I, I started writing for the Sentinel at 18 years old, but I had an affinity to write when I was 11 years old. And so I want to give young people in our community the same opportunity. The cost to launch this newspaper is minimal in comparison to the rewards that we would get from it. I mentioned the Rams on two fronts. Yes, they want a footprint here, but the Rams also have money to spend in communities that they serve. And so, you know, I could give you an example. In the city of Inglewood, for example, they, they, they were responsible for rebuilding the football field at Coleman Stadium with their influence through Nike and their money. They're, they're responsible, every, every, every week, they give money to the coach, $5,000 to the coach at Morningside High School or Inglewood High School. Those are resources that can be coming here, and, and, and letting our, letting the people here, and our two great high schools, know how much they're appreciated. Again, I've already done, I've already did the initial investment on this. I'm going to show you the website in a second. In order to print a newspaper, you guys have a tabloid newspaper that they drop off at City Hall that, you know, that they claim is of all of South Bay. It's a money grabber. I'm not knocking them for, you know, it's a money grabber. It's a black and white, it's a black and white newspaper, and it's all over the South Bay. But it does not necessarily reflect any of the cities that it serves. It's basically classified ads for money, and if you can demonstrate that these papers go out to so many different places, you continue to get the classified ads. So it's going to cost roughly $2,500 a month if we were to print, say, 5,000 newspapers, tabloid newspapers, that will be distributed to various zip codes. I already spoke with 7-Eleven. They're open to accepting the newspaper, as they do other community newspapers that are not even from here. And then the print, the print, the cost, the, the print cost of the tabloid is about $785 if we were to do this. This would be, it's $785 a week. That's per 2,500 copies every week. I'm not talking about starting out weekly. I'm talking about starting out monthly and allow for the website that I already have developed to start infusing the news, infusing the paper in the meantime. What I need from the city council, there are classified ads, there's classified ad revenue in every city in America, and there's classified ad revenue here in the city of Longdale. And I'm asking for you to support us with that classified ad revenue. There are businesses, there are a number of businesses here in the city of Longdale, some of them that I've already spoke to, who will support this, will support this venue. I want to, that's me, at a Rams game. I've already explained to you what my history is in this business. I've been doing it since I was 18 years old, and I would like for you to go to, if you can, longdeltimes.com to bring up the website. Do you need it?
Ken, while you're doing that, may I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
How often would you want, be wanting to put out an edition?
I think that, I think...
Weekly? Is it monthly?
Conservatively, I think that it's okay for us to start out monthly. We'll get 12 editions for a calendar year. And then I think as revenue increase and as demand dictates, what's happened to a lot of community newspapers across the country is that they, they were, they, they were bringing, they were putting, they were bringing in less money and pu, and, and just putting themselves in debt. My experience over 44 years has taught me that you don't have to do that. We can start out monthly. We're going to have a website. The website is already up. I don't have any copy on the website at, at the time, but the website is ready to go right now. The website is ready to go, you know, right now. This wonderful project that's happening over at Los Linger High School, I mean, neighbors ask me all the time, what's going on over there? Now, I have an idea of what's going on over there, but it would be good to be able to explain to them some of the things that are going on in the city of Longdale. That's, the constituents of this city have a right to know that, but they don't necessarily have a right to have to have a newspaper. I think it's going to take someone like myself, who just has the, the passion to do it, and, and who's willing to make the commitment for the city of Longdale.
Thank you.
Longdeltimes.com. One other thing that I do want to add in terms of revenue, newspapers that exist today that are successful are event companies that so happen to print newspapers. And so Longdale Times will be an event company. We will do, we will have high school all-star games. We will have, you know, high schools softball games. We will have stuff that takes place in elementary schools as well that we will pay for, for, for the students in the city of Longdale.
What about history-type things?
What was that?
What about city history-type things?
City what?
History.
City history, absolutely. I mean, look, I don't, what I want, I want all of the ideas that everyone in the city of Longdale may have, because it's not going to be my newspaper. This is going to be the city of Longdale's newspaper. And, and, and I think that this is a very diverse city. It's a very loving city. And, and, and I think it's a city that really needs to get to know each other in a more intimate way, and I think that the community newspaper can do that. This is the website. As you can see, the website is up right now. There's no copy on the website. I mean, copy can go up on this website tomorrow. But what I wanted to do was to come down here and introduce myself to you guys, right? And to let you know that this is, this is your vehicle, this is our vehicle, this is the vehicle. this is the vehicle for the City of Longdale that I think would, would just be the best thing to happen to the city.
Okay, let's do this. If anyone have any, any questions, so we can wrap the presentation up because we do have some other things we have to, to get to.
It's wrap up, Robert.
Oh, I just-
No, 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 if you have any questions and then, then make sure you get the questions so we can put those in before we go wrap it up.
I just really want to thank you for coming forward and it, you're, like you said, it is a, it does take someone with a passion for doing this. Just my, I guess for me personally, I, I'm glad that you're doing the digital and the print because for me, and I think the median age is like thirty-five to forty when I look at the licenses for the city and you have to look at kind of how people intake their information and their news. So I'm glad that you're going on both and I'm, I'm really looking forward to see how this comes out.
Thank you.
I, I do have a question. When you mention advertisement, who is going after the businesses for advertisement?
Me.
You are. So the city won't have to do anything?
No, 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 absolutely not, absolutely not. In fact, what I'm looking for more than anything else is a partnership with these businesses. And, and, and so it's, it, this is not a money grab situation. This is an information grab situation. This is a way of informing, you know, the people of our city and also to let the Rams, the Clippers and, 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 and the Chargers know that, that, that we're going to welcome their business here in the City of Longdale.
And my last question is, the co, the monthly cost to the city, is there a monthly cost to the city?
Well, look, I, I'm, look, I could tell you that in the City of Inglewood, the City of Inglewood essentially bankrolls Inglewood today. That's how they survive. And it's, it's in advertising though. It's, I'm, I'm not going to stand here before you and ask for any of our citizens' dollars to run a newspaper, but what I will ask for you to do is to consider us when you have advertising that, and when you have an advertising budget, to consider us so that we can stay alive.
Thank you.
Okay, I want to say that I'm excited about it. It's looking good. Congratulations, it's come a long way. I'm excited for you and we'll continue discussing to see what kind of partnership we can develop.
Thank you, ma'am.
But thank you for the presentation. With that, we will move our agenda for item eighteen. Hold on, item seventeen. Pat Kearney, Councilman Kearney, you want to-
Okay, yeah. I spoke about this a little earlier about the letter going to Supervisor Mitchell's office. There's a draft copy of the letter in there. I'd like to see our council support this so we can get extra deputies. I know there's a political battle going on between the Board of Supervisors and our sheriff right now, and that's affecting our deputy status. But I'd like to send this letter with all your names on it to Holly Mitchell and tell her we do need deputies, we need retention and we do need compensation for our deputies. I believe you got one too, Robert?
Yeah, I would say, let, let me get, Councilman Quayle, send it out, I'll respond to it.
No, sorry.
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, this one.
That's what I said.
I'll let it go this time.
See, I was doing so well. I was doing it.
You're doing good today.
My only question is, is what are we looking at in terms of costs if they come back and say, you know, oh?
This is just a letter, a draft letter in support of A-Large, asking for retention and compensation. There's no cost back of the city.
So if they raise it, they'll come back to us for like the new contract, we can still-
Well, you know, on the new contract, I said on the board, the committee for the new contract and this year there won't be any raises.
So, oh, is it those funds that they took away? It's trying to put them back?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
And, and right now, my understanding is they're in a higher freeze or is that lifted?
They're in a political hiring freeze.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and I will say just so, I did sign a, I guess it was pretty much the same, the same letter as an individual, as, as the mayor, but I'm happy to sign this letter as a full council if it's the desire of the council because I do agree with it. Does anybody have anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to remind the council, a couple of weeks ago, we, I put out a feeling to the Sheriff's Department-
Can we turn the light on?
And at this time, at this time, they had mentioned back to staff that they're not adding any more deputies to any contract city. So kind of with Councilman Kearney's comments on the letter, just-
And I believe that all forty-four contract cities are sending the same letter to their prospective Board of Supervisors.
I'm okay signing.
Okay. Yeah, can we get them to turn the house lights back on? Okay, they're on. A little bit. All right, thank you. Okay, so what is the question of this body? I'm, I'm okay with it.
I'm okay signing.
Consensus?
So should we take a, I guess so it's official, let's take a motion by, oh. Mr. Kearney, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that the city council, all, the full city council signs this letter and sends it forward to Supervisor Mitchell's office.
I'll second that. Go ahead, Roger.
Okay, the motion's been made by Kearney and seconded by Hoffman-Gorman that we sent such a letter to the Board of Supervisors, mainly Supervisor Holly Mitchell. All in, the council please vote.
Okay, for item number seventeen, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, now we're on items from the mayor's city council members.
I have a point of order. Doesn't the city manager have a report before we go? It's, was it a minute on this agenda?
He's not on the agenda.
Oh, it's not on here. Does that mean he doesn't have a report?
I, I don't have a report, mayor and council. I've been, since we have this long agenda, I thought I'd just spare the council and the mayor.
Yeah.
There, there you go, nice report.
There you go.
Okay, I did attend the Lobby Trust and Oversight Committee for, JPI for the sheriff's contract. And I also attended the Easter egg hunt at Jane Adams. I thought it was well-attended. There's a couple of things I'll be talking to Mike about, well, surely I'll be talking to Mike about. Couple tweaks maybe next year. And with that, you want the dates?
No.
The Lobby Trust was on the thirteenth and Easter egg was on the sixteenth. I'll pass it on to Mike, I'd like to the right.
Thank, thank you, Councilman Quayle.
Events of note, I attended the South Bay Cities Council of Government Legislative Committee. We voted to oppose a whole bunch of bills that were trying to basically eliminate parking. And then I did attend the Easter egg hunt, but at William Green and that was well-attended. And then I would like to see on a future agenda item fences and why we require permits. That seems to be a hot topic that comes up all the time, so I just want to get background information on that.
Okay. Councilwoman Quayle.
All right, really quick. Um, I was on a call with the county regarding the coronavirus update. Numbers are rising. Please use your discretion if you want to, if you're in a big group, wear a mask, especially if you don't know who's sitting next to you. Also, I did tour the West Basin Municipal Water District Reclamation Plant in El Segundo. I recommend that if you haven't done the tour, you go on their website, RSVP. It's an eye-opening. I didn't know that, how much water we waste in the city in general. So, and they convert a big percentage of that water and it goes to the mobile oil refinery in a, in our parks. If you see a green, uh, green, a purple pipe, that's recycled water. Also, could we discuss the crossing guard study? We were supposed to have some, a couple of months back or almost six months back, an update of how many kids are crossing our streets with the crossing guards. So if we could get a report on that, that would be great. I did attend the Easter egg hunt at Jane Adams. I want to thank staff. Mike, your staff was great. The one thing I, I would like to put on next year's event is a special run for special children, special needs, yes. You know, wheelchairs or, you know, they're special need kids. That would be nice, either park to have a, a time slot just for them.
Yeah, we can advertise that. Were there any there this year?
We had three.
Three, okay.
And I asked Adrian or Adrian to give them little bags with Easter eggs since they couldn't get into the, the event. And then some rearranging the decorations that we had, the entrances and all that. We could discuss that later. But thank you, staff. That would be all.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Hoffman-Gorman.
I also attended the Easter egg hunt up at William Green School. An excellent event. Thank you, Mike, and to all the volunteers that came to assist you from Longdale High and such. I do, I also have a couple of different ideas that have come up that somewhere along the way, Mike, I'd like to share with you and see if we could critique it a little bit. I also wanted to mention that many residents are probably noticing, and I believe Gary brought it up earlier, we have some cleanup along the 405 currently going on on some homeless situations. And in one area, we had four dump trucks worth of trash come out. And if you don't think that that's amazing to see, that much stuff was absolutely crazy. This is, I want to say thank you to all of our city staff, Julian, that have come out and assisted us in that and to Michael's staff. This is a really big undertaking and even Sean, because these people are aggressive. We're disrupting what they think of as their home. We are working with Caltrans and the CHP and it is continuing. This week, they are moving southbound of Hawthorne Boulevard. And evidently, once they post it, they're getting ready to be cleaned out. They're actually doing some housekeeping, which that's kind of amazing too. So anyway, it is changing and we are in, the Caltrans and the city subcommittee, we're working on things like that and trying to clean up our 405 right away because our citizens have looked at this too much and for too long. So we're, and they're also, in this time, they're also offering the homeless people help. And unfortunately, I don't think we've had a taker yet on our offer, but we are set with offers. All right, that was all I had.
Thank you. Yeah, on that, that Caltrans, there was, I reported a few weeks ago right behind the, the silver building, right by the freeway there, what looks to be, well, I'm describing as a condominium. It was, no, it's, I'm not, I'm not joking, it's a full-pleaded condominium, you know. It was complete with all the amenities and y, y, you needed, what have you. And so we reported that. The sad part about it is that obviously it's sad that, that, that someone was actually living in it and they made a little hole and they had four walls up and actually, I call it a condominium just jokingly because it was actually a door. You know, they've got a door from somewhere, I don't know if it was already on site or they imported the door in or what happened, but they actually have a door. And I don't know if they was, have a legal address or not. And, and when you're inside the building, the silver building, the sad part, you can see right down on it. So anyone who has clients or what have you to visit and they look out your window and that's what they're going to see. You know, and, and that's notwithstanding the, the tent that was a little further down that you can see as well. But it's covered with a lot of brush, of trees, but this is like right out, right out there. And the sad part about it was when Caltrans originally came out, they were taking a look at it, but they did not have the authority to tamper with the structure. Only the vegetation and the weeds and the debris and all that stuff that they were cleaning up. And so when they left, it was clean, but the structure was still there, you know, what have you. And I think it slowly started to fall down or what have you. And last time I saw it, yesterday, the day before, I think there was like one wall standing or something like that. So I don't know what happened to it, what have you. If the person moved on or got housing or what have you, hopefully they got some housing. But that's kind of sad for people to have to, to see when they're, you know, trying to conduct business and you look out your window and there it is. So we need to do our best to, to make sure Caltrans is, and the CHP is getting that handled and getting those folks the, the service that they need in terms of homeless services. With that, I did attend the, the Easter egg extravaganza. That's what they call it in another city, extravaganza. So maybe we need to call ours extravaganza, just like that word extravaganza. I'm going to say that two more times before the night is over. But anyway, so I attended both William Greens as well as Jane Adams Park and they were very well-attended. Nice job, by the way, you know, all the, the staff, Parks and Recs and Social Services staff and the volunteers at both parks. It was a nice job. It seemed like the kids was really having a, having a good time. This year, we did a little different and, you know, at, at first I kind of, you know, questioned them why we changed it to two different parks or what have you, but it seemed like it worked out. And it, it, it was good, you know, you won me over. That, that was good. I also attended the restoration Life Church here, here in Longdale. They had a, they had a big thing to do on their property as well as Larry Rudolph Park. That Saturday, I mean, I can't tell you how many people showed up to that community event. It was really nicely, nicely done. It was like a street fair and all that kind of stuff slash, you know, Easter celebration, so that was really nice. I also attend, I don't have the date here, but it was last week, a memorial service for Betty Day. And Betty Day, she was the founder of the Watts Gain Task Force. And very influential in gain reduction here in, in the area, not just in the Watts, in the South LA area, but Athens and Gardena and South area. She had a homecoming, they had a homecoming for her last week. So her name was Betty Day, the founder of the Watts Games Force. And all the folks who's in, involved with gain reduction, reducing recidivism was, was there as well as nonprofits that their focus is youth, restorative justice and things that issue was there. And so I took part in that. And that's all I have to report. And with that, we have two closed sessions, nineteen and twenty. I'm going to ask the city attorney to give us the provision for which we will go under concerning closed session. Let's do it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council is going to close session, two items. One, conference with labor negotiator per government code section 54957.6. And two, to discuss existing litigation per government code section 54956.9D1. Anyone wishing a more complete description of the two, the full descriptions are found on the agenda. Thank you, sir.
Okay, with that, we're standing recessed to closed session. Okay, we have returned from closed session. I'm going to ask the city attorney to give the report of the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council was briefed on both items. No action reportable under the Brown Act was taken this evening. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Longdale City Council will be held at 6:30 PM on Monday, May the second. In these here chambers, it's now nine forty-eight. This meeting is adjourned.